It is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me in the political meetings.
This is the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by council member Henry?
A second.
Yeah, a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, uh, community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for residents and other stakeholders to share issues or concerns not listed on the agenda with the city. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. Individuals should not expect the mayor or council immediately to respond to their comments. The city manager, if appropriate, will follow up directly with the presenter and/or respond to the questions raised during the community comment at the next meeting. With that, is there anyone for community comments? All right, on to presentations and reports, item five point one. The, you know what, is there anyone on the Zoom? That we know of? No? Okay, thank you. Um, okay, uh, then on to the, um, the audit. Welcome. We're just saying there are a lot of faces in here tonight that we haven't seen in forever in, in person, and you were one of them.
Sneak in for once a year anyways.
We look forward to it.
Good, good. Let's see, um, everybody has a copy of our presentation? Okay, good, good. Well, thank you for the opportunity to go through the, um, the 2021, uh, financial statement audit and some of the financial highlights. I'll hit some of the responsibilities that we need to go through, uh, as part of our audit process. Uh, just starting on the introduction, uh, we'll talk about the audit opinion. Uh, we'll go through some of the numbers with the general fund results. Uh, some of the other governmental funds that you have, enterprise funds, the water sewer and storm. And then some of the key performance indicators that we accumulate, um, through the, uh, state auditor sources. All right, uh, first on the audit results, um, our job in an audit is giving an opinion on the financial statements. And that involves a number of tests of transactions and account balances. And we reach an opinion, um, which is referred to as an unmodified audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that you can get. Um, again, that's no, uh, guarantee that the, there wouldn't be any fraud or, or those kind of things. An audit's not meant to do that necessarily. Um, but again, that's the highest level of assurance from a financial statement perspective. Uh, the state tells us we need to test specifics, uh, state statute provisions. Um, how you'd issue bonds or deposit money or, um, bid projects, those kind of things. And, uh, we don't have any instances of noncompliance, so we go through a checklist that the state, uh, gives us. And, uh, we do tests off of that checklist. So, uh, good results there. And then on the next page, um, when we look at the internal control of the city, um, we look at, at how transaction cycles are processed. And the only finding that we have is one that we have probably in ninety-five percent of the cities we work with. Um, and it's related to the preparation of financial statements. Uh, to put the financial statements together requires a pretty deep understanding of a lot of accounting standards and how they should be reported. Um, and, and typically there will only be one, one or two people involved in the city, uh, in the financial reporting process. Now, you do have us draft the financial statements, but we can't be part of your internal control. Um, so ultimately that results in this finding, uh, which again, like I say, it shows up in almost all small cities that we work with. Um, I, I think you can be reasonably confident that you have compensating controls. Staff reviews our audit, um, reviews the journal entries, all of the other things that are done as part of the audit process. And so, uh, we do have confidence that the compensating controls are sufficient. Okay, the, um, next page, the, uh, summary of the general fund, um, is reported up above. And what we're doing here is comparing your, uh, fund balance to the following year's budget. And you have a fund balance policy, uh, that maintains the general fund unrestricted fund balance at fifty percent of what you plan to spend in the following year. So that yellow line represents the balance over, uh, the last five years. Um, at the end of twenty twenty-one, um, we're about a million five, uh, in fund balance. And, uh, again, that relates directly fifty percent of what the following year's budget is. It's a good practice, uh, to look at the fund balance every year and then transfer out, uh, well, everything above what you need for working capital to think, to, uh, in the past, it's been permanent capital projects. Helps you build reserves, uh, and beyond rainy days. It's, it's great for building reserves for planned projects and those kind of things. Okay, um, a summary of the results of the general fund is presented above. Um, we're showing revenue and expenditures compared with budget. Uh, a few things that stand out here, uh, you can see revenue was about three hundred and ten thousand dollars more than budget. That really relates to the license and permits coming in, uh, over plan. Um, so a good solid year of building activity, uh, triggered that. And then I mentioned the transfer of the excess fund balance. Uh, so you can see transfers out were three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars more than budget. So that's truing up that fund balance, uh, at the end of the year and transferring those, um, uh, ex- excess funds to permanent capital project. Okay, on the next page, um, we have a summary of the, um, revenue and expenditures, um, by the particular financial statement category type. Um, on the left is the revenue and you can see taxes. Uh, while it's going up each of the three years, uh, one thing I'll point out at the end is your, your tax rate declined in those three years. So that's a reflection of the growth in the city, um, over that same time period. And then most of the other revenue categories were pretty consistent year over year in that three-year period. Uh, on the right are the expenditures by the largest categories that we have. Um, and, uh, a mix of trending up and down over, over each of the years, but generally, uh, pretty close to the prior two years.
Can you speak to what the big increase in other, um, expenditures was in twenty twenty-one?
I'll look that up.
Oh, it was probably in one of more of the detailed reports later.
Yeah, in the, in the, um, in the audit itself. I'll have to look a little closer. And, uh, can I get back to you on that?
Yes. Just curious.
Oh, it, it's transfers. Yeah, but the transfers show up in that other category.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Okay.
Okay. All right, the, uh, next group of funds that we will, uh, have presented are the special revenue funds. Now, we do have a deficit, uh, reported here in all of the funds added together of a hundred and, uh, sixteen thousand dollars. The park and ride transit is the one carrying the largest deficit at a hundred and forty-two. And that's just carrying expenses ahead of, uh, funds that will be received to offset that deficit. So again, there's a plan to eliminate that. So, um, we don't see that as a concern. Okay, the capital project fund balances, um, are next, and these are set aside for projects. Um, we have a total fund balance at the end of the year of, uh, just about four million dollars. Um, the largest is in park development. You can see we have two point four million, or, I'm sorry, two million, uh, I always get these columns backwards. Um, two million at the end of twenty twenty-one. And we are carrying a deficit in the Jonathan Carver Parkway improvements of two hundred and one thousand. But that will be fixed with bond proceeds. They're not fixed, but bond proceeds will be allocated to offset, uh, that deficit in the, um, in the next year or so. And Sixth Street Reconstruction also has a deficit, and that's the same situation. Okay, on page ten, um, the debt service, uh, funds of the city. Um, we have about fourteen million dollars of bonds outstanding, uh, in all of the debt service funds. This doesn't include the enterprise fund debt. And we do have one fund with a small deficit, that twenty nineteen geo-tax increment. And that will be made whole as, as, uh, greater tax increment comes in over the next year or two. So again, we don't see that as a concern. If you look at all the other cash and asset balances, you can see that they're positive. And, uh, that indicates they're accumulating sufficient resources for that bond repayment. Okay, enterprise funds on page eleven. Uh, this graph is really, uh, intended to give you a, an indication of the sources and the uses of funds. It's, uh, driven from the cash flow statement, um, in the financial statements. And, uh, what we try to represent here is, uh, how are we paying for the, the expenditure, expenses and debt service? So on the right, the, the gray and the yellow bar are the expenses. And on, uh, the left are the, the operating revenue and the, uh, connection fees. And you can see in the water fund, we generated enough operating revenue to cover the bond debt service and the operating expenses. And then also had, uh, a significant amount of connection fees during the year. And again, with the, the, a large amount of bonds that you issued recently in the water fund, those will help, uh, make for future payments. Okay, the cash balances, um, so on the previous page, we had the operations. Now we have the ending cash balances. And, um, you can see that trending up significantly. Uh, the yellow bar indicates how much is still unspent bond proceeds. So we issued a ten, eleven million dollars in bonds. There's still about five million in cash from those bonds, uh, yet to pay. Um, and a large increase really driven by connection fees. I think it was about a million six, uh, this past year in connection fees. That really helped drive up the cash balance. And then sewer fund, uh, uh, again, good results, but, uh, uh, little less than the water fund. You can see that the operating, uh, receipts, uh, covered operating expenses plus some of the debt service. And then we did have connection fees that, um, that drove the cash balance ahead of, uh, the expenses. And on the next page, we'll see kind of the same thing with the cash balances. We still have some unspent bond proceeds, uh, about five hundred thousand dollars of unspent bond proceeds. And then a, a good cash balance, um, that's just over a million five, uh, at the end of the year. Um, so like I mentioned with the, the water, accumulating a decent cash balance to provide for f- future, uh, debt service payments. And then stormwater on page fifteen. Here are the cost of, of the system. If you look at, uh, the debt service payments and the operating expenses, um, our connection fees and our, our operating receipts, uh, were less than, uh, those amounts. Operating receipts were sufficient to cover the operating expenses. Um, but connection fees were a lesser amount, uh, during the year. But if you look on the next page, uh, page sixteen, we did issue bonds in that fund, and you still see cash balance going up. Um, the yellow again is the unspent bond proceeds. And we did have a decrease in the, um, uh, overall operating cash. So that's down to about five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which again, the importance of doing the long-term planning, um, I saw in your work session, you're talking about those things. Uh, it's a really important process to look at this cash balance and look at the future payments that you have out there. And I know that, well, we've been involved in the last several years in doing that. And it just helps adjust, uh, rates and the charges that you have and making sure that's sufficient to cover, um, expenses. Okay, on page seventeen, this gives you an indication, if you add everything up in the city, uh, how much cash is outstanding at the end of the year. Um, we increased significantly, but most are six and a half million of that is unspent bond proceeds, or at least six and a half million of that. Um, otherwise, you're relatively consistent from the amount outstanding for the general fund, the debt service and the capital projects. So, um, consistency over that period of time and most the, or the, the additional increase is really enterprise fund related. Okay, uh, the next part, uh, of our report are some of the key, uh, performance indicators. These are common KPIs that would be looked at at a bond rating agency or to compare yourself to other, other communities. Um, you can see that, like I mentioned before, with the taxes from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, you have a decrease in the tax rate of about five percentage points. And again, with the growth of the city, that's helped drive the, the, a favorable decrease in, in tax rate. And you can see that you're below, uh, an average of cities in Carver County and below what it's termed class four cities. The state auditor gives a classification based on the population of the city. So that's positive. Uh, taxes per capita is pretty close to what the other comparables are. You're six hundred and eleven dollars per person at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one. And you can see by the trends there, I would expect that the comparables would be right at about where you are. Okay, from the debt, uh, perspective, um, with the growth of the city over the last few years, your debt issuance is higher than comparable communities. And with the, uh, the water bonds that you issued in the last year, those were a large dollar amount. So that's really the reason for the spike in, uh, uh, the debt per capita. Um, again, the importance of doing long-term plans and looking out, uh, is really the answer to, when you see trends like this, you want to know that, um, you have those future resources to offset that. Okay, um, another, uh, performance indicator related to debt is the percent of your total, or a percent of debt service payments to your total operating expenses. Um, again, I think this reflects the growth of the city. You have a higher percentage of your expenses, uh, related to debt service payments. Um, you can see that that's, that's quite a bit higher than the cities in Carver County and class four cities, and I think reflects investment. Okay, um, on the current expenditure side, now looking at what it costs to run the city, we have a per capita calculation here. And you can see that your, uh, current expenditures per capita are about four hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and you can see that's, that down, um, over any of the three previous years presented and less than the comparable communities.
Can you remind me, is class four cities just contingent on population?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, a twenty-five hundred to a ten thousand, or right about that level. Okay, so that's a lot of the financial highlights. I think you saw a lot of good stuff from, um, uh, fund balance position, um, cash reserves, um, general fund balance, or general fund performance, all of those kind of things. From an audit perspective, um, city did a nice job being prepared for the audit. Uh, we got, uh, in and out of here in a reasonable amount of time. So, yeah, thumbs up to Kathy and Lynn on that. So, um, it, we always enjoy working with, uh, with staff here. They're very responsive and give us the answers to all the questions. And, uh, we get, uh, out of your hair as fast as we can. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to go through this. I can answer any questions that anybody might have.
Any questions for Steve?
Nothing further, no?
I have something. Um, if, I believe we go back to page eleven. So we were looking at the water fund. And so on this one, we looked really good with our operating costs and debt payments as compared to what we were bringing in. But if we go to fifteen, it's fifteen. Then we didn't make it there with our operating costs and debt payments. What, what's going on between those two to have such a disparity between?
It's a good question. I, the, I think the most important thing first is that your operating receipts, uh, cover your operating expenses, and those do. So the orange versus the yellow.
Okay.
Year ahead. And then, um, you know, timing of connection or stormwater access fees can vary from year to year. So you have these, um, debt payments outstanding, and one year you may not have that much, uh, access charges or stormwater access fees. And you're, you're, I wouldn't say banking, but in the next year, you, you should be making that up. So there's a timing difference that kind of happens with that. And that's why the importance of having a, um, a cash reserve
Mm-hmm.
is in place. So you kind of cover that gap. And that's why, oh, when we look over a five or ten-year period, we have confidence that the development or the, what's identified as future stormwater access fees is sufficient to cover those debt service payments.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
Uh, when we're looking at our debt per capita, um, uh, do we feel like we're at a good number? What was it, a third, a percentage? Thirty-four point eleven percent? Uh, sorry, page twenty-one.
Yep.
Um, when we're looking at our comparable cities and cities in Carver County, we, obviously we know we're putting in more
Mm-hmm.
infrastructure. We're doing more right now because we're in that growth period. But, um, it's thirty-four. I mean, are we starting to get teetering on the edge of maybe not being comfortable with as much debt services we're carrying, or you think we're still good?
Again, it's like, I think that, um, the importance of looking forward, it's not good, bad or otherwise. Uh, you know, it's, it is sort of, you're at that growth stage right now. Uh, and like, um, if, uh, Moody's or Standard and Poor's looks at, they, they look at this and this is one of the questions that they ask. You know, when you have this, this amount allocated to debt service payments, what's your plan to eventually bring it down? Like, when you're fully developed, if you take it out five or ten years, I'd bet that this goes down back into normal.
Okay.
Um, so with what's been identified as future revenue sources, I don't see this as an issue.
Okay, good. Cause I do, obviously with our rating, we want to be careful with that. So if we're ever getting, we might be putting ourselves in jeopardy. We don't want to look at having to shoot ourselves in the foot with, uh, the worst interest rates.
Yeah, for, well, from my experience too, um, you know, and I, I've helped before on those bond rating calls. It's the storytelling that's most important. You know, that, they'll, they would ask a question and they would, their analysts would flag something like this. And when you can tell the story about where we're going and why we're doing it, that usually mitigates any negative. You know, if you, if you get to those rating meetings and you don't have an answer for it, that checks a box on something else. So the city's always done a good job of being able to explain.
So there's more than literally just what's on paper?
Yeah.
There are other considerations.
And that's the thing with all this KPI is that it's not one thing that's good, bad or otherwise. It's meant to give you context and, and to have these discussions. That's why the question's great, is that, you know, we can talk about what do we do to, or how, do we know where we're going with it?
Okay, all right, thank you. Glenn, anything for me?
No.
Um, all right. Um, you mentioned it, but I want to give it a little bit more airtime. Um, thank you so much to Kathy and to Lynn for your work. I know that the audit is just an absolute bear and something that you, um, look forward to every year because mostly that you look forward to it being over with. So, um, really well done. It's a lot of work. It's a heavy lift, um, and I appreciate your work. So I don't think we have any other questions for you.
All right.
Have a good evening. Really great to see you in person.
Yes.
Nice seeing you this year.
Yeah, I know. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Oh, good night, Steve.
Yep, see ya.
Um, all right, we don't have any public hearings.
I think we need to make a motion, don't we, to approve?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one audit as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, Joy. I was ready to move along. Um, no public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by council member Henry?
A second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving right along to business items. Item number eight point one, the Affordable Housing Connection Fee Waiver with the Carver County CDA. Mr. Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mary. I'm just trying to figure out. Good evening. Um, so today we have a proposal in front of us by the Carver CDA Community Buildings Agency to go through a connection fee waiver request. So this is the first one that we are looking at after adopting that policy just, uh, maybe a couple of months ago. I'll do a presentation and I'll allow the applicant to do some sort of introduction or presentation and some sort of discussion on it.
Excuse me, Harry. Is your microphone on? Thank you. It's for the people on.
No, I appreciate that. That's a rookie.
Tens and tens of people watching right now.
Right, okay. So, um, just to give you some context, so the development that, uh, is intended to go in is, is Carver Oaks and Carver Place. It's just south of the, uh, transit station, south of elementary school, next to that neighborhood park. Just a more close-up look at it. Here we go. So Carver Oaks is a, uh, senior residence. Uh, it'll be about forty-three units, um, at various, uh, affordability levels. The Carver Place will actually be workforce housing, um, and that'll be about sixty units. And it's just behind this existing apartment complex along John McCarver. Um, to give you an idea as to the timeline that they're working on, uh, what they would like is some, uh, some sort of determination, you know, some sort of approval on the connection fee waiver, which will help them when they're applying for MHFA funding, uh, which will be awarded in December of this year. And then later in October of next year, in twenty twenty-three, they'll intend to, uh, start construction, uh, go through the development approval process before then, um, and then complete their construction in December of twenty twenty-four. Uh, they intend to complete this entire project, leasing everything out, uh, by, I believe it was twenty twenty-five. Think October twenty twenty-five, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the proposal itself, so when we're looking at Carver Place and Carver Oaks, Carver Place has a lot of different units that are at various levels of affordability. Carver Oaks is a little bit more focused on the, uh, way more affordable end of that spectrum. Um, but overall, they are providing a hundred and three units at various levels of affordability. Um, the connection fees per unit, uh, at least in twenty twenty-two, um, for water, it's almost nine grand, and for sewer, it's almost a grand. What that shakes out to when you're, uh, doing all the math, which I'll explain a little bit later, uh, but the full connection fee amount, if they weren't asking for some sort of waiver, would be about a million and seventeen. Um, the reduced connection fee amount, if they could go past that cap, would be about half a million. Um, so in this particular case, they can only, per the policy, get a, um, connection fee waiver for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so the, uh, CDA would be, uh, liable for the rest of that amount. Now, because these fees are twenty twenty, we do intend to, um, I believe at some point, uh, this summer, I think, to take another look at those connection fees and potentially update them. So these are just numbers based on what's current, and that'll probably change as we go through the process. So I know, you know, kind of thrown a lot of numbers and a lot of details about the project itself at, um, at you guys, but I just want to go through briefly the policy that was adopted, just to kind of, um, revisit that. You know, when we're looking at housing stock, uh, as a part of the Housing Action Plan, um, you know, there is a demand for more affordable, uh, units. The tools that we laid out within the Housing Action Plan include a reduction in sewer and water connection fees. Uh, if the applicant or the developer can demonstrate that these units are going to be affordable housing. The policy that was adopted includes, uh, quite a bit about making sure that the, um, the only applicable projects are workforce or senior housing, which this meets both of those. Uh, that only applies to connection fees from the city. City council will review it, which is what we're currently doing. Uh, that affordability must be guaranteed for twenty years. So, you know, way in twenty forty-five, which I can't fail them currently, but way, way in the future, it's going to be affordable. It will run out in twenty forty-five. Um, but that's, that's kind of the idea. Um, it is tiered based on the affordability of the project. Uh, the maximum waiver is two hundred and fifty thousand. Sorry, it's just a little bit slow. Um, to recap, the median household income, uh, for Carver is about a hundred and fourteen thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand. So when we're looking at anything that's eighty percent, that's that ninety-one, not, almost ninety-two thousand. Uh, the thirty and fifty percent are a little bit closer to, what is fifteen and thirty? So fifty-seven for fifty and then thirty for, uh, thirty-fourth or, uh, for thirty percent. What this translates to is when we're looking at the amount that the developer has to pay for each of those different units based on their affordability, um, you know, anything that's eighty percent, the developer play, uh, pays eighty percent of the connection fees, and they are waived for twenty percent. Uh, and that goes down the line, fifty percent is fifty percent, and then, uh, thirty percent, the developer pays thirty percent of that, um, and waives seventy percent of that. So there's no ability for the developer to just ask for, you know, a, a complete waiver of all the fees. So what's in front of you today, uh, we've, uh, at least from the staff perspective, we feel like it complies with the, uh, connection fee waiver policy. Um, we do recommend the approval of the fee waiver request by Carver County CDA. Just as a small note, it doesn't guarantee approval of the project, so you can't use it to say, well, you gave us the waiver, why can't you give us the project? It's not a part of it. They still have to go through development and make sure that it meets all of our codes. Um, and as mentioned earlier, the fees are subject to change. So twenty twenty-three might be a little bit different. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions?
I just have like one comment. Um, I, when you were showing the full amount, I was concerned if how the wording was going to be here, you know, that they were going to ask for an exception. But I see at the very end of the resolution, it's very clear. But I see at the very end of the resolution, it's very clear that it aligns with what we put the cap at, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well-written, so thank you.
So there's a, they have a certain number of years, and I'm sorry that I can't find it right now, to make this project happen or they have to reapply. Can you remind me of how many years that is?
I can, I can do that. Council member Mock. So the way that staff has teed this up for the council is to provide the fee waiver, generally speaking, these fees are due at the time of building permit application. So if they come in and ask for a building permit anytime before the end of 2024, this will apply. And the reason, at least that we talked about that number, was although it's anticipated that, you know, potentially they are in the ground next fall, fall of 2023, the MHFA funding that they're seeking, that's pretty competitive, and projects don't always, they're not always awarded that funding the first year. I assume that that is going to be an indicator of whether they can even do the project if they get that money. So we said, well, you know, let's at least provide the council the option to give them that extra year in case it takes that long. If, you know, if they're not here for a building permit within that time period, then they would have to come back and reapply.
Okay. So in the new policies, did we have one year in there that they had to use it? Did we have an end date? Not for this specific project, but if anyone, company A applies for this, so that they use it in a reasonable amount of time? Did we include that in that policy? We did not?
There was no such deadline in the policy, so I think the council has the flexibility to do what you might think is warranted in any given situation.
Okay.
And, you know, this might seem to some people like we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, why are they here asking for fee waivers now and they're not maybe even going to be in the ground for a year? It's my understanding, the way these affordable housing projects work, are they, they need to get their financing figured out early before they come in for land use approvals and other things. And when councils approve things like this and give an indication that you're going to provide some public form of subsidies for these projects, it gives them points through that application process, so it can be really helpful. So that's why we're doing it this early on.
So, and I, oh, go ahead, Brent.
When you're finished, but they get. Sorry.
Rookie.
Veteran mistake. At some point, I think it would be helpful to have Allison or somebody come up from the CDA, just because I think there's a lot of nuance that, and context that Allison could provide related to the points and the scoring if.
Yep, and I'll have a couple more questions for you as well. But this one is a little bit more on the city policy side rather than on their side. Because as I was reading through this, knowing and thinking that you happen to be the CDA and it comes forth first, I know projects take years and years and years. So I'm, I'm glad, looking back, that we did not have this, you know, you've got this one year to use it, or whatever that number might be. I do, again, this is a policy on our side, so if we do, let's say we have multiple ones come in that might hit in 2024, now how do we, do we have a mechanism for handling that so we're not stacking up on top of each other if we can't afford it?
That, that's generally going to be discussed on a case-by-case basis, based on projects. You're never required to do this, so just because you approve, you know, a CDA fee waiver today doesn't mean you have to approve, approve every other application that comes in. It's like any other form of public assistance. So I think, you know, the, the general approach, and this is still being, this is new for, for Carver, but staff will look at these applications, determine if, you know, you can absorb that sort of an impact on your budget when it comes to the fee waivers, and you'll look at them all on that sort of individualized basis. So to answer your question, I don't think anybody's thought about what might happen if a number of applications come in, but that said, you're, you're going to have plenty of aggression to do what you'd like to do with those applications if that, that does happen.
Yep, okay.
Just to kind of add on to Dave's comments, I think we have a little bit more runway. There's a limited amount of parcels in the city that you could develop high-density on. And so we're going to have just more time. They would come in like a single-family permit would. So if we start to realize through annexation or through, through other forms of development that that would be likely, then we would broach that conversation with the council and say, you know, how are you feeling about this program? Is it working for you? We can review the financial impact. Glenn, do you have a question?
No, no question.
Okay, all right. And Dave, that's very helpful, too, that, that we have the leeway to say, okay, this is too big of an impact if we have five of them on the docket that are coming in at once, so that's great. Allison, as long as you're here, I have a question for you. So we have some of the examples included for your resident services. And do you, for the senior living, do you supply any type of transportation, van service, or anything that's actually with the buildings?
Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Allison Strick, I'm the deputy director with the Carver County CDA. So regarding transportation, one of the things that the CDA is doing, you know, when you talk about points, Minnesota housing, the RFP is super competitive. And so one of the, the areas that is new to Minnesota housing in 2021 is equitable development, where you can meet with stakeholder groups. And so on the senior side, where we've been working with the Chan-Hassan Senior Commission, and on the general occupancy side, we've been working with His House Foundation, which is a nonprofit that works a lot with people experiencing housing instability. And that's something we've heard both loud and clear from both sides, is not only help coordinating transportation, but in particular, as it relates to groceries. And so we've been having some discussions on what we can do with the tenant service coordinator, which is a requirement on the senior side. We've learned that like Cub Food, Cub Foods will deliver if you order, for free if you order over like $50. So we've been talking about, is there a way we can coordinate that for multiple residents? And then, and, yes, so we are trying to work on transportation. We don't have it figured out, but it is something that we've heard for both sides of the building that we're working on.
Okay. My only other thing was actually on the, the plan. You know, there's community gardens in the center of that. Have they, has thought of where they're going to relocate? Are you going to still offer that as an amenity to your folks there?
It's something we want to keep between both buildings, yes. I just, we've got to figure out with the architect exactly where we can locate them.
Okay, okay. I think that's all I have.
Right. Allison, welcome. You are another one of the faces that we haven't seen in person.
Uh-huh.
So it's really good to see you.
Nice to see you, what you usually say.
My questions are more for the process. This is the first time you guys are running for those MHFA?
No, so this is our second round. We submitted, so in 2020, we submitted four applications to Minnesota housing, knowing we weren't going to get funded for all of them. But Carver Oaks and Carver Place both were submitted in 2020. So I will say, as you're all probably very well aware, Trails Edge South in Waconia is the project we got funded for. That's slated to open on November 1st right now. And one of the things that did help us get funded in that project was their water and sewer trunk fee waivers. So as Dave mentioned, that is helpful for us, not only because we need to know our total development costs, but we will get points for Minnesota housing for having those waivers. And a couple other things here, as Harry was talking, just to quick clarify. So the affordability on this project, you can get extra points for going to 40 years, so we will take those extra points and go to 40 years because obviously the CDA, our mission is to keep them affordable long-term. So 40 years to us really, you know, it doesn't matter because we're going to keep them affordable after that 40 years. And just, not that it really matters, but the lease-up would probably be three months, so it'll be quick. So we're, we're excited, we're hoping. There are no other projects in Carver County going forward this year to Minnesota housing. And Minnesota housing has recently started looking at other developments within communities, and you actually like lose points if, if something's been developed recently, but Carver Crossings has passed that threshold, so that, because it's been more than five years, that doesn't hurt us, so that's, that's good as well.
Do your chances increase because this is the second time you're submitting?
No. It's, it is, it's all about making the points. And so every developer gets creative and tries to figure out how to, how we can snatch every point that we can.
So potentially with a fee waiver, this is a stronger application than one year ago?
Yep, because we get points both under other, there's two categories with a fee waiver, we get points for other contributions is one, and I don't remember the, the other one, but. And then additionally, Carver County awarded us $1 million to Carver Oaks and $1 million to Carver Place of ARPA money. So that helps as well on the other contributions standpoint, having that extra money to go into this project.
What's ARPA?
The American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay, thanks.
You look like you might have a question?
Yeah, I did, I'm very interested in the points thing. In addition to, you know, what you have in front of us today and things like the groceries and the cap agency food shelves, Smartlink Transit, Southwest Prime, are there other things that you could foresee the city partnering with or areas that you might come to us that kind of helps with this points thing?
I don't, I, I don't think so, because we, I mean, we vetted this project like back in January. We started scoring it, so I don't foresee there being anything just from a point standpoint besides the waiver program that we would, at this point, because the application's due July 15th, I think our processing agent would have probably told me if there was something else I should be asking. This would be the big one for us.
If there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 128-22, a resolution approving a connection fee waiver application for Carver County Community Development Agency.
We have a motion by council member Mock.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll keep you posted.
Please do.
Please do.
Thanks, Allison. All right, moving along to 8.2, the Brookview Final Plaid. Mr. Davis?
So in front of us today, we have the final plaid for Brookview. So just as an overview, I'll do my presentation, the developer will have a chance to, to speak, and then there'll be some discussion, and then hopefully, you know, some sort of motion to approve with the conditions that are in there. In terms of the site and project details, I know that you all are pretty familiar with it, but just for everyone that could be at home or is here that isn't familiar with it, the project is, we'll change the slide. Project is located south of the Meadows neighborhood, the Meadows Development, and it's sort of bordered to the west, south, and east by a bunch of different bluffs that kind of jag in and out of the site. Over wall, there are about 22 lots, about three outlots. Outlet A, sorry, this is not working.
No, you're fine.
Outlet A is mostly encumbered by bluffs, but there will also be that trail down to Broadway. Outlet B is going to be mostly stormwater, and there are a few bluffs as soon as you get to the more eastern side of it. Then Outlet, Outlet C will be a private street owned and maintained by the HOA, and also provide access to that trail that'll snake its way through Outlet A. You know, in terms of this planning process, staff has reviewed it, all the necessary agencies and departments have reviewed it. It's been reviewed against the comprehensive plan, it's been reviewed against the fetches of fire code and engineering. So at this point, we're pretty confident in, in what we're showing you, at least from the requirements and code standpoint. Where we're at now is, you know, that's kind of more of the technical side of it, but now we're at the public side of it. I'm sorry, I stopped changing.
You're fine.
I don't know why.
You're more self-conscious about it. We get it, what it'll catch up.
But now, you know, we've gone through the concept phase, we've gone through the preliminary plaid, we're now at final plaid. So we're now getting to the point where, okay, this is what it's going to look like, this is what we're approving. Good call, I'm sorry, thank you. I hope I talk loud enough for things to pick up. But now we're at final plaid, so this is the final stage of this development process, the public side of it at least. When we're looking at kind of the role that's in front of you all, you know, just to reiterate and for those that are listening, you know, your job right now is just to review the recommendation that's from Planning Commission, to review it, you know, in terms of the development agreement and to, and to approve that. But then, you know, approving the final plaid, there was also another condition there about when the rezoning went through for this particular property through the preliminary plaid phase of this, that there is a summary publication of that ordinance, because it was required that it would be published at the time of final plaid. So there's a little bit of nuance there, but nothing, nothing too much. In terms of the final plaid, you know, again, proposed by Manley Development, not the home builder, as the home builder will actually be Waconia Homes with Jim Winkles. The engineering has been completed by Samba Tech, and as I stated before, this will be 22 lots, as well as a trail connection to Broadway. The original plan was 24, so this has been reduced, and it was reduced during the preliminary plaid phase. For this particular property, and it'll eventually change, the comp plan does show this area as low-density, single-family residential at about three to five units per acre. That's accepting a lot of things like bluffs, or wetlands, or various other different things. So basically, what it all comes down to is that the site is developable. The bluffs are not a terrible issue for this particular site, but they are working through all that, and it will be developed as a single-family. It's about three, four units per acre for this particular development. In terms of the site access and, and streets, there were some concerns initially about the fact that this is kind of a dead end. However, there are a lot of different examples, not just nearby, but also in other developments, where you can have dead ends with, you know, quite a few homes on the end of them, and have it still meet fire code. And then at the same time, the streets are, are built in order to withstand, you know, everything from fire trucks to, you know, your current daily traffic. So from that standpoint, both from fire and engineering, there are no concerns with what's being proposed. The thing about this particular development, so Mulberry Lane will be right-of-way, and so that terminates in a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac itself is about 96 feet wide. Brookview Court will be, as I stated before, a private street that's owned and maintained by the HOA. This is a benefit of going through that rezoning process in order to have a planned residential development, and it will have some flexibility there. Because as a result, what we have is some additional screening, which I'll get into a little bit later on Outlet C, in between the existing Meadows Development and Brookview. So when we're looking at the bluff, the requirements from the bluff ordinance say that there needs to be some sort of conservation easement. And that's to protect the fact that, you know, there are trees that are maintaining the top of this bluff that are crucial to ward off against erosion, and a lot of other different things. It just, it's worth it to know that there aren't any variances that are required as a result of this development. It's been the case throughout the entire development's process. When we're looking at the map, which will come up in a second, but the yellow line that's on there is the Tier 2 setback. So the Tier 2 setback is, is a little bit more lenient, you can have things like a lawn, but you wouldn't be able to put a whole lot else there. It just kind of reclaims some of that area for use by the property owner. Tier 1, which is that blue line, gets a bit more restrictive, can't do a whole lot behind that line. If there are any trees, you have to let them be. And then that green line is actually the top edge of that, of that bluff. So absolutely nothing gets passed there in terms of protections. So when we're talking about bluffs, there's a lot of things that staff does that the DNR has done in terms of sort of educating people, telling them about the bluffs, why they're important. So we do a lot of homebuyer education, at least on that end of it. There is some signage that will be there in order to show that there is a conservation easement there. For surveys, you know, when I bought my house with my wife, there was a title search, and so we figured out were there any easements on the property. The same thing will apply not just to homeowners that are building their house on this, you know, on these properties, but anyone in the future that buys it. We review doing building permits, so whether it's a new house or it's an addition, like a deck, we will make sure that nothing is encroaching within that conservation easement. And, you know, if anyone does anything within a conservation easement, we usually hear about it, too, especially while we're doing inspections or we're doing maintenance work, utility work. So, you know, we'll probably find out about it eventually. So for examples of other successful developments that have some sort of, you know, significant bluff feature to it, there are a number of them. You know, I'm not going to go through the list, but this is something that we've successfully done elsewhere in Carver. It's not a huge issue, but we will continue to maintain those bluff protections. To get into park dedication and the, and the trails really briefly. So park dedication, we're looking at about 4,000. To get into park dedication and the, and the trails really briefly, so park dedication, we're looking at about, uh, four thousand seventy dollars is, yeah. Four thousand seventy dollars per unit. So overall, twenty-two units, we're looking at almost, uh, ninety grand. The thing about this trail, uh, it has changed just maybe a little bit since you last saw it, uh, but it will need to be field fit. It is coming off of that Brookview Court. Um, and there will be a public pedestrian access easement all the way from that public right-of-way along Mulberry. All the way to this trail and encompassing the whole trail. But we just need to work with the developer to figure out where exactly that trail goes, um, and how it best fits within the topography. Just to reiterate, the trails are allowed in bluffs and that's by city ordinance. So it's not a, not a new thing unique to this development. When we're looking into the larger system of trails within this particular area of Carver, it does link up very nicely with, um, any of the trails that are running nearby. It does provide a little bit more of a, 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 a well-connected and accessible, uh, sort of network of, of trails across this part of Carver. So it will, it will provide, uh, a bit more, not just to the new residents of Brookview, but also to those that are existing, um, and, and sort of living nearby. For tree preservation, um, just to kind of briefly show you once it, once it changes, but the plan has, uh, this survey area that's been red hatched. Basically what that means is that those, all of those trees that are within that area are going to be impacted. But the nice thing about that is really, um, the, the number of trees are at about fifty percent in terms of significant, um, circumference or, or actually, no. It's diameter around those trees. So there really isn't a huge issue in terms of the number of trees that are being impacted, which amounts to about six percent of the total trees that were inventoried on the site. So it's not a huge issue. It is, uh, important to note that, I mean, construction does impact trees. That will impact those neighbors that are adjacent. But overall, in terms of the overall impact of losing those trees, it's not super significant. For landscape, as, as I mentioned earlier, um, the, uh, planned residential development or the PRD process allows a little bit of variation that the developer has taken advantage of, um, to highlight two particular areas. One of them is Brookview Court. So if you're looking at the top there, uh, there's another image that'll pop up in just a second. But it shows you a little bit more of an enlarged look at what that's going to be. And there'll be a berm there, there will be, uh, a bunch of new plants that are going to be planted there, some trees. And as a result, it's going to provide a really effective barrier between those existing, uh, properties, um, within Meadows and those that are now going to be along Brookview Court. The second location is, um, the access route into the stormwater detention area on the east side. And the landscape that is being, uh, added along that particular area. You know, this is more close a view of that, uh, but it shows that the developer is, is, is trying to make these, um, this new development a little bit more, uh, compatible with the adjacent neighbors and, and sort of taking into account a lot of their concerns and their desires. Uh, just to wrap up, so, um, don't want to steal too much of Dave's thunder, but, um, in terms of the developers' agreement, it's, uh, you know, just to reiterate, you know, it is a document signed by both city and the developer. It's something that we can hold, hold them to. So if they get halfway through putting in the road and it looks like a, I don't know, like a, like a dirt track out there, we'll be able to finish it up. Because they give us a letter of credit, that's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the improvements that they're, that they're proposing. So, you know, no matter what happens, we're covered as part of this developers' agreement. They can't start without that. Dave, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, council, um, in, in terms of the development agreement, we did include a copy of it in the packet. Um, it's kind of a new process for the council, I know that. We've talked over the last few months about, you know, what these agreements look like. Certainly if you have any questions, let me know. It is a new form for the city, um, based on forms that I have, um, and colleagues of mine have successfully used in a number of other developing communities. It's not that the other form was bad, it was, in my opinion, this one is just more user-friendly and so I think over time, the council and staff will get used to it. But it, as, uh, Mr. Davis alluded to, it's got all the, um, sort of the typical things you'd like to see out of a development agreement. It binds the developer to building all the necessary public infrastructure, as well as all the private infrastructure that is necessary, you know, to serve these new homes and, uh, provides a financial security in the event that, um, uh, there's any kind of a default. The city can kind of jump in and clean up the site or, you know, if it wants to go even further than that and, and create some, uh, infrastructure. And then it also incorporates a private road agreement, which is important from my standpoint, because the city wants to make sure that those homes along that private road, that east-west road have good access forever. Um, and that's important not only for those residents, uh, but also for the city in case we need, um, you know, emergency vehicles or other things to go down those roads. So, um, if there were to be any sort of a, um, an issue with the HOA maintaining that private road, the city would retain under the agreement the right, but not the obligation, but the right to go do work, uh, fix the road if it really came to that and then assess those homeowners for the cost of it. Because it's not a cost that the city should have to, have to bear. So, um, that's kind of the overview of the development agreement. I'm certainly happy to answer questions if the council has any. But that document has been, um, fine-tuned over the course of the last few weeks that we've worked, um, with, uh, Mr. Manley and his attorney on some of the terms. And, um, just kind of finalized everything before the packet went out last week. There's been a few minor tweaks to it, but it's really just rearranging things, nothing substantive since it went into your packet. And so it's, the, the approval that, that I'm asking for as it relates to the development agreement this evening is, um, a motion. I think it's in number three of the staff report, uh, authorizing the execution of that agreement, um, subject to any changes that, uh, non-substantive changes, of course. That would be approved and required by the city attorney, just so we can finalize everything and, and button it up before it gets totally out the door. So, um, again, that's just an overview and I'm happy to, to answer questions if you have any.
All right.
I really do like the fact that the developers' agreement now has a table of contents. Can't tell you how many times I've lost myself in one of those. So in terms of what's in front of you all tonight, so, so really, um, the recommendation and, and motion that we have for you is that both staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the final plat, the Brookview final plat. As David mentioned, we're also recommending approval of the developers' agreement for Brookview, um, subject to any changes. And then the, uh, approval of that summary publication for the rezoning, which was conditioned on this final plat going through and being approved. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
If we could just have, uh, Mr. Manley come up, I know he's shared some information on selecting a builder with the planning commission that I think the city council will be interested in hearing about and more about the homes before we get into maybe the questions.
Sure. Come on up.
Eric, council members. Good evening. Um, my name's Kurt Manley, the developer. Uh, we interviewed and spoke to several developers and we ended up, um, picking a smaller custom home builder that, um, we looked at some of his homes. It's, uh, Jim Winkles with, uh, Waconia Homes, builds beautiful homes and I know he's already walked lots out there with, you know, um, some customers. And, you know, they've obviously just fallen in love with, uh, the views off the back and I think it's going to be a very successful project. And I want to thank everybody. I know I probably get more emails from Dave and Harry and, and my family, but recently, hopefully that comes to an end there. But, no, they've been, they've been awesome to work with. Everybody's been really awesome to work with. So I really don't have anything else to add. I mean, they've covered it very well, but if you have any questions for me or my engineer showed up and, so, you should ask him a few questions just so he can earn his money. But I'm, I'm open for questions if you have any.
Okay, uh, we'll have you sit there and we'll just start going through our motion process. Let's just start. Glenn?
Start down there.
I have a question. Um, I was probably, I'll start with you, Mr. Davis. Uh, two sections of the packet talks about sidewalks, we're talking about trail connectivity. Will there be a sidewalk on both, um, Mulberry Drive and the private road?
Remember this one. Councilmember Sarah, uh, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Thanks for asking my question.
I want to make a couple of comments. I have a question on the developers' agree- Developers' agreement. Um, I do like, um, item twenty-one and I'm not sure what section, um, but it's on page twelve of the developer agreement about the signage on the bluff regulations. Thank you for including that. That was really important, that we make sure that potential home buyers are really well-educated on what those lots are all about and all of the details about that. So I appreciate that section. I'm trying to read exhibit D on the trail easement portion of it and I just want to make sure I have the gist of this down. That the trail that is going to go from Brookview Court between the houses and then down the bluff, um, connecting to the other trail. That's going to be all granted as an easement to the city, right? So the city will be responsible for main, after it's built, maintaining it and owning it in perpetuity, right?
So, well, yes, but, um, the city's actually going to be deeded Outlet A, yeah, that entire Outlet.
Oh, that whole Outlet, okay.
So the city's going to own the vast majority of that trail.
Already, okay.
Yes, and one, I mentioned before that there's been a few minor tweaks to this stuff in the last couple of days. And that really consists of rearranging the, uh, development agreement. We're removing the trail easement.
Okay.
Instrument itself and building that pedestrian easement into the private road agreement, because private road is, um, is within Outlet C and that's going to have the sidewalk. Um, and what we wanted to make sure, uh, happens is that pedestrians have the ability to connect from that trail right into that private road, um, and use the sidewalk. So it's really meant for, um, the ability to get from, from Outlet A, which has a long, kind of a skinny little portion that goes up to the private road, out to the public right-of-way on Mulberry Lane.
Okay.
So that's one thing that's changed a little bit. There, um, there is that pedestrian access made available.
Okay, so then the city will own that pedestrian access?
Just the, um, Outlet, everything in Outlet A, the city will own.
Okay.
The paved surfaces within Outlet C
Yes.
will all be, uh, an HOA-owned, uh,
Okay.
portion of the development that has to be maintained in perpetuity by the HOA.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. That's what I needed. Okay, that's all I have. Christie?
Glenn?
Harry, you s- you said, uh, that there would be some homeowner education, uh, regarding the bluffs and the setbacks and everything. Who's going to be doing the homeowner education?
Yeah.
I, 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 um, worked with, uh, Mr. Manley's team too on, on creating a, a declaration that will be recorded uh, against all the properties at the time the plat's recorded. And those are the properties that include any of the tier-one buffer area. So I think, uh, Mr. Davis alluded to, um, a conservation easement at one point. That's not what we're recording. We're recording a declaration against these parcels to make sure that it's of record. And I just want to bring up also a requirement of the development agreement. It's, it may be buried in there and I can't find it now, but there's also a provision that requires, um, Mr. Manley's team to, to make efforts to make sure all prospective homebuyers are made aware of that. So not only will it be of record, and so it's going to be in the documents that they look at when they, when their title company comes and shows them, hey, this is what's there. It's also a city ordinance, so they can't violate it and if we find out they're violating, we can enforce it that way. And then I think Mr. Manley's team's also going to do, um, what they can at least, um, that's the expectation, to make sure that they understand that there's bluff there. Um, there's some buffers and protected areas that are, um, in existence because of that city ordinance. And, and we just want to make sure, you know, you can't, you know, you can't build a deck over that area and that kind of a thing. So, um, it's kind of a belt, suspenders approach to it. There's multiple angles at, at, um, for this, but, you know.
He knows Brett.
Yeah, the bottom line is there's plenty of ways for these prospective homebuyers to, to know about this. And, um, that's really the goal, because we can enforce the code against them whether they knew about it or not. But, you know, what we want is some transparency and we want them to be aware of this stuff when they buy a house.
Okay, and then you said that there were, you going to elaborate on that?
Just a tiny bit if I may. Um, we have spoken with the builder as well to make it, make all of the potential buyers aware of the bluff ordinances and, and the importance of the signs and not going beyond the signs. And, um, so we will enforce it on our end as well.
Okay, um, and then there was some terminology as far as consequences if there was violations. Are those consequences spelled out and are they financial, are they, I mean, what are the consequences?
For whom? Perspective homebuyers or for the developer?
Depending on who would be doing the violations, I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, if the developer violates any of the city ordinances or laws that aren't, you know, things that aren't, um, allowed, we would have the ability to call them on a default on the development agreement. Hold building permits, pretty significant consequences that I promise you. Mr. Manley's team's not going to want to go anywhere near. And if it's a homebuyer, we have all the tools in our, in our code enforcement. I mean, it's misdemeanor offenses. It's, you can go get a civil injunction, you can get a temporary restraining order to prevent someone from putting up a building. Um, and if need be, if someone puts up a building and you find out about it later, you can require them to take it down. That's a drastic step, but it has happened in cities if you really wanted to do that. So there's plenty of, of mechanisms to make sure that doesn't happen.
Those are my questions. I would like to add that the planning commission did pass it on a verbal vote unanimous, so.
Thank you. Um, let's see. I think this looks good. I like, you know, to what Joyce said, I like the signage about the bluff ordinance. Mr. Manley, I assume that these houses are going to be designed with their proximity to the bluff in mind. So not a second-story slider that just begs to have a deck added to it, um, when they're right on the bluff line, correct?
Correct, and, and I've met with the builder numerous times. There's a, there's, I believe, two lots that are, you know, the building pad goes right up to the bluff line.
Yep.
And those are the ones that we have, you know, where he's going to be designing a deck that's actually like incorporated as part of the house instead of protruding by, beyond the house. So he, he's well aware of it.
Okay, um, I like, um, you know, the four-way stop, I think is going to be, that's going to be added to Mulberry and Green Ash. I think will, um, be really good news for the neighbors back there who I've dealt with, um, recently with some speeding concerns. I think that there's just a lot of stuff in here and I've been very impressed with your team being very receptive to
Appreciate that.
the feedback that you've received, not only from us up here, but also from the community, everything from, um, reducing the number of lots, which I have never seen done before. So, um, thank you for working with us.
We feel the same way about your team.
Great, thanks.
So I just wanted to comment, um, this isn't a question, this is, you know, we've been going through this process for quite a while now. And then we've had, had some, um, discussions with the, the neighbors next door and, um, you know, some information at the meeting that, that was brought out and back and forth. And I just want to say, you know, I had a lot of questions when this first came through and I feel like they have been answered and addressed. And I really, um, feel that the due diligence on all sides of this project has been taken care of. Um, and I feel very settled with this after, um, everything, uh, that we looked at and this, it wasn't gone through lightly, lightly by any of us. And I just want to say thanks to everyone, you know, in this room for getting those questions answered, making sure that we're on the right track and getting things, um, all in line. And I know that for, when new, when new developments come in, that land that was previously there, it was a farm, it was a field, it was a woods. And that happens in every new development that we've had come into Carver. So as much as it pains the development, it's also not unique to any specific development where we wouldn't have developments here. That's just what it looks like. So, um, again, um, at the process of going through all this, I feel really confident in the due diligence that has been done. So thank you to everyone for that.
Do you have something else to say? All right, if we are done commenting, yes, go ahead, Brett.
Just something, something you shared, Kurt, with the planning commission, I want to make sure the council is aware of the anticipated price point for the homes. Did you share that with the council?
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be that, that seven fifty range, you know, give or take a little bit, but they're, they're definitely, I mean, I know, I, I've, I've had some of the customers call me because, you know, we're the developer of record, they, they, the builder didn't want to put a sign up.
You're the name that's on the document.
Well, it, so, there, there's a fine line. He wanted to pre-market, but he didn't want to assume your vote out of res- out, out of respect to the council. You know, he didn't want to put a sign up there and start advertising before we actually had it. So he has not put a sign up there yet. But, so, people call me and when I, when I speak with them, they, you know, they say, well, we love the product that's around there, but we want something a little more unique, a little more, you know, like kind of like the next level up there. So, uh, yeah, that's, that's kind of been the price point that people have really been, um, seeking out.
That's great. We don't have many opportunities for custom homes.
And I don't know whether you guys have ever walked around that bluff line there, but- but oh my gosh, the views are just
Yep.
Pretty amazing.
It's a neat parcel, yeah.
It is.
All right.
To adopt Resolution 125-22 approving the final plat for residential development to be known as Brookview.
Got a motion by council member, Sarah.
I'll second.
And a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 126-22 authorizing summary publication of Ordinance 02-2022, which rezones the Brookview property.
I will second.
Got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize execution of the development agreement for Brookview, subject to any changes deemed necessary by the city attorney.
Got a motion by council member Mock.
I'll second that.
And a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
The builder put up a sign.
All right, we'll make a proud, thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next we have 8.3, the Ironwood Park Improvement Project Bid Award. Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have before us three contracts for consideration. The project has been bid. You have a general site contract to prepare the site, do the grading work, the parking lot, utility work. So that's contract number one before us. Contract number two is for the park shelter itself, so that structure. There'll be a contractor that'll be constructing that. And then number three is the skate park structure itself. So that is contract three of three. This is something that's been in the works for quite a while now. I think this began maybe about a year ago. This has gone through a series of concept, plan phase, council work sessions. We've engaged the community throughout the process. And given all that, the council's input, obviously. This is the project that's before us. It includes a new parking lot. I should back up. There's about three acres that the city had acquired as a result of the Timber Creek Development, first edition of that development. So that's where the primary bulk of these improvements are going to be happening in an outlot that was deeded to the city. There is a little bit of work that's also occurring within the Carver Elementary School site itself. So in the new area, it'll have a parking lot, skate park, picnic shelter, some casual seating, lawn games, full-size basketball court, trail connectivity throughout the park system. Then the outdoor classroom is within that existing school area, as I mentioned. So that's kind of the project in a nutshell. As far as project schedule goes, we've had some communications with the general site contractor, urban companies. Uniquely, they're actually doing the site work at the school expansion right now. So a contractor that's already in town, which is a good thing. They'll be right down the road, so that helps out a bunch. They're looking forward to getting started out there. Jonathan and Mr. Anderson have been working with both the skate park and the park shelter, working through those contracts, which you see in your packet. So those contracts are also in final form. With respect to the bid itself for the site work, we received three bids. The low bid was from G Urban Companies of St. Paul, Minnesota, in the amount of $1,032,773.50. So this was about 6% over our engineer's estimate of $975,000, so about $58,000 over, all things considered in this market. I was pretty happy with the results that came in, you know, given all the stuff we're talking about today with inflation and such. With some of the specialty work involved with this site, it was really anybody's guess what kind of a number we were going to get. So all in all, I'm pretty happy with where the numbers came in for that. One other thing I'm also happy about is throughout this process, working with the park shelter contractor and the skate park, they've held their prices. So that's something that's obviously very nice and also something I wouldn't have expected. So they've been able to do that for us, which is a good thing as well. So with respect to the financing and funding of the project, the previous estimate when we were before you in April, when you approved the plans and specs, was $1.88 million. You'll see a summary of the recommended post-bid budget, which was included in your packet, which is in the amount of $1.92 million, with a delta of about $42,000, or about 2%. So again, given where things are at, it is more than what we were projecting, but on the same token, I think it's, you know, given the market today, that's the number that we got here in May of 2022. And in order to do the scope of the project as proposed, that's what it's going to cost. So all in all, staff would recommend, moving forward, if the council so chooses with this scope and awarding the three contracts as I had outlined in the memo. So at this point, I'll entertain any questions. Mr. Nelson's here, who's a landscape architect. He can answer any of the technical questions on the landscape components, the other two contracts. He'd be happy to discuss those. And obviously, Mr. Anderson as well, so. Any questions?
All right, I'm going to just kick it off with a question. As far as park construction, it's been a while since we did Ironwood Park Phase One. I assume that, for the most part, the park won't be necessarily ready or kind of grown in the day the contractors leave, like the skate park would be ready, but like the field area, is it going to be open right away, or does it need time to rest? Like the fields that we
Yeah, so the way it's all in right now is we have a substantial completion date this fall. Let's see, it was November 18th of 2022. We are, based on the material leg times and all that stuff that's going on right now, we're thinking that in order for the shelter to get put up, it's going to be right up towards the end of the year. So we're thinking there's for sure going to be some restoration work to happen in '23. I think we get a lot of it restored, but I know there was for sure going to be some touch-up work. So we'll have to make a call at that time whether or not we feel comfortable opening it up in totality or maybe having to keep some of the amenities closed for a little bit next springs, but, yeah.
Glenn?
How much was that? 2.2% more than the original bid?
2.2%.
Or was it 6%?
The site contractor component of it itself came in 6% higher.
Okay.
But overall, total project, we were about 2.2% over what we had thought.
Brent, do we have any plans other than where we can find that 2.2%?
Yeah, I'll defer to Lynn.
So we have a couple different funding sources that we can use for the 40,000. We have unallocated fund balance from the audit that Steve was talking about earlier that you can choose to use. That was $350,000. You can utilize that. We also have a special fund balance, that special capital fund balance that you can always try to use. For that amount, I wouldn't suggest doing an interfund loan. It's just kind of clunky to do that amount of an interfund loan balance. But those would be my two biggest suggestions that I would recommend doing for the 44,000 deficit. Also, you have a 5% construction contingency built in there. The chances of you using the full $77,000 on that project may or may not happen. So that's kind of all parks.
Or we can take it out of the engineering fees, right? That answers my question, thank you.
I have a quick question on the skate park. Is Sourcewell the contractor that we were seeing the diagrams for originally?
So Sourcewell is the purchasing.
Oh, the cooperative.
Jonathan, do you want to describe it?
Yeah, no, I don't have a question on that. Just wondering if, like, we saw in the presentation, if what we saw in the presentation is also who we would be awarding the contract.
Yes, that is correct, yeah. And, yeah, I apologize. Jonathan and Dave worked through all the contract stuff with those two, so that's why I called them up, so.
Yeah, and if you have any other specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, council members here. But like Aaron said, Spawn Ranch is the company that we've been working with from the onset of this process, and somebody we've worked with in the past in other communities. And so they've developed all the plans, and as part of that cooperative purchase agreement, they develop those plans kind of pro bono on the front end in anticipation of getting the construction contract on the back end, so.
Great, thank you.
Joy? I don't have any questions. Well, it's good to me. I've got to be honest, I have some real heartburn on budget creep on this one. And I would like to propose removing the shelter, because I think, you know, I look at this, and this was something that was budgeted originally. The long-term financial plan is $1.5 million, and we are significantly above that. So that's what I'm proposing, and that's how.
I missed the word you said. You said you want to remove. Okay, yep, I want to clarify.
So just to clarify what your recommendation is. Is it to remove it now forever? Is it to build it later when we think we can afford it? What is your proposal?
It's for tonight to remove it from the plan. I think we could eventually, or council can take another look at it when there's a more healthy fund balance in the park dedication fee, if that's a prudent decision. However, you know, if this was a project in the Johnson-Bourne Camp family household and our budget was, let's say, $15,000, because we don't work in numbers that hurt $1.5 million. You know, if it was, if it came up to $20,000, we wouldn't be doing it.
That's a 25% increase. We're talking 2.2, and it's within a contingency budgets. That's... Sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
Yeah, so that's just where I'm feeling, that's where I'm at right now, and that's where I'll be voting this evening.
So I'd just like to express my opinion, because, you know, we met April 4th to talk over the plan specifications. At that time, we knew that the budget was going to go up from 1.5 to 1.86. Part of that was due to material costs, bringing the budget up, which, inflation, right? We've been talking about that. We also agreed to add features, right? We expanded that shelter. We expanded the parking lot. We added security lighting, those sorts of things. We agreed on the plan specifications. So I kind of feel like we've already made the decision on this plan specification. We already committed to going over that $1.5 million budget. I, you know, I concur with Mr. Schmidt that it's incredible that these costs are not increasing dramatically from what we, that 1.86, and things are not going to get cheaper to build in the future. And I suggest that we stick with the current specification.
Excuse me, I will comment also then in rebuttal to Mayor Johnson's request. I am fine with the plan as it is presented. Yes, it is above what we had, but when we're looking at, we've just been talking about inflation, and inflation is everywhere. Supply chain issues are everywhere. Shipping is higher. But even outside of that, this park, we have really tweaked. I feel like we've looked at this thing for like a million times, but we've tweaked it and tweaked it, and we have decided to add it. We have decided to make it this premier area. And to pull something out now when we have everything mobilized and already up in that area, to then start over with that, have to pay mobilization fees to get, depending on what that might be, and then looking at it a year from now to come back in and do more, or two years or three years, whatever it might be, and do more construction in an area where we could have just had it done all at one time. And I normally don't like going over on anything, because I am a penny watcher. But on this one, I feel really confident in the plans that we have hashed over and hashed over. And again, there was a re, we had talked about it for the shelter, to expand it even, to be able to even create more of a gathering space, which in turn we expanded the parking lot, because we wanted to make sure we had enough parking for these amenities that we're adding. So I am still comfortable keeping the park shelter in and going forward where we're at.
I'm of the same belief, where I want to keep the park shelter.
Okay. I just wanted to share with you guys. You all have been here for all of the previous votes, and you'll remember that I wasn't in favor of expanding the shelter. You'll remember that I lost out on a vote too for the lighting as well. So this isn't the first time you're hearing this. I agree that this is further down the road, but I'm sharing that same budget creep angst that I'm experiencing, and for that reason, I will not be voting for the shelter. So do we have any more discussion? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award a contract to G Urban Companies Incorporated in the amount of $1,032,773.50 for the Ironwood Park Improvement Project.
Got a motion by council member Mock.
I'll second that.
And a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion authorizing the execution of the cooperative purchase contract through the Minnesota Cooperative Purchase Venture for the park shelter.
We have a motion by council member McKnight.
I'll second that.
And a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Do we need a roll call vote?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Council member Henry.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sarah.
Aye.
Council member McKnight.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Nay. All right, motion passes, 4-1.
I'll make a motion authorizing execution of the cooperative purchase contract with Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing for the skate park.
We have a motion by council member Sarah.
I'll second that.
Ooh, and a competitive process, a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we're getting ourselves a perk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Parking and traffic ordinance. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again. So, let me just pull my memo up. So as you all know, the staff and more recently, the council have been involved in amending Chapter 46 to the city code. It relates to traffic and vehicles, and this was all prompted by some changes that needed to be made to the Third Street provisions that are in the code that were just outdated and no longer useful, frankly. And as part of the process, different department heads had an opportunity to review Chapter 46 and make recommendations. That includes law enforcement, fire, public works, engineering, and everybody else, frankly, that works with the city, and so, which is a good thing. It's a good thing, I'm not saying that...
Lynn, are your changes in here?
Luckily, there was no finance-related terms in there, too many at least. A couple maybe about fines, but this was all before Lynn was here, so we didn't involve her, no. But anyway, overall, the changes that are presented reflect much of the discussion that the council had at a workshop. I think it was the end of, or the middle of May. And so a few changes were made since the ordinance was presented that evening in draft form. And I don't want to list, there's roughly 11 substantive changes that are in the memo that was in your packet tonight, and I know we talked about most, if not all, of those at the last workshop when we discussed this. But overall, I think staff is pretty pleased with where the ordinance ended up. One thing that I know was discussed at the last meeting, none of those changes were incorporated, because I think the goal from council member Mock was just to talk to law enforcement about snowmobile speeds on public streets. I know that Brent had a discussion with law enforcement about what speeds are and what they're enforced at. And I'm not sure if there was anything reported back about whether there's issues with snowmobile speeds on public streets, but I don't believe that's the case, okay? And so at this time, in terms of speeds, nothing's being proposed. And so at this time, in terms of speeds, nothing's being proposed in the current ordinance to be changed in that regard. Of course, we're all happy to answer any questions if council has any questions. And there are two recommended actions in the packet materials. The first is to approve the ordinance if you are satisfied with the end result. And the second would be to approve resolution 12722 that would authorize summary publication. So that staff doesn't have to publish the entire, I think, seven or eight page ordinance. Just saves on costs, so. I'll stand for questions or further discussion.
I just had a couple of questions and I'm gonna go first, if that's okay. Let's see, in section 46-29, which is on page one of the ordinance, page two of the packet, there's still a couple mentions of railroad signal, railroad sign or signals in that paragraph of a prohibition. Yep, it's the page number one, so okay. Thank you. Can we remove those since we removed all the railroad mentions?
So that's an interesting provision. What it's really saying is that people aren't authorized to place signs up that might look, you know, be an imitation of a sign or resemble a sign that might be, suggests there's a railroad crossing. So I don't, I don't think.
Okay, then disregard, that makes sense.
But we did take out the other railroad provisions that we talked about, so.
Okay, so in that same vein, while we're speaking of unauthorized signs, at the very top of the next page, page two, so it would be, and you know, I don't think it necessarily relates to anywhere in here, but could we add language for unauthorized speed bumps? In this day and age where you can get anything off of Amazon? We've had some conversations and I've heard chatter of, what if I just got a speed bump and threw it out there? So can we prohibit that as well?
Absolutely, especially on city streets. You're the road authority, so you can definitely prohibit that. I don't think I've seen anything in your code about that, so if the council wants to do something like that or if that's an issue.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
I would add it because it would be a liability issue for the homeowner as well.
And then the only other thing that I had in here is, let's see. On page two of the ordinance, it is section 46-51 subsection 15, parking of trailers and campers. We talk about trailers and campers, but can we talk about street parking of boats as well? And prohibit that in that same category of trailers, campers and boats?
Yeah, typically, and maybe this isn't the case, but I would assume that if a boat is parked on the street, it's on the trailer. If that's not the case always, then I think we can include that to make it crystal clear. You can't put boats out there either, but I mean, at least as I'm reading this now, there is a provision. I know it's in here. Let me make sure it's in here.
Okay.
Yeah, unhitched trailers, for example, cannot be parked on any city street for more than 24 consecutive hours. And that's in section 46-3. So that's an existing provision. We clarified the one day to 24 hours just to make it easier to enforce.
Okay, got it.
So if that addresses your concern.
It does. Honestly, I was looking for the word boat in here, but you're right. If there's a boat not on a trailer on a city street.
That's a bigger issue.
Yeah.
Or it's a tugboat.
So, thank you. As long as that's covered and we're good with that, I'm fine with that, so thank you.
Courtney, I have something that same section isn't okay.
Yeah, and I'm actually done, so go ahead.
Oh, okay. So when we're looking at the period of 24 hours, that short time still gives me a little bit of heartburn because I think of 48 hours as a weekend. You have someone come over for a weekend or, you know, we did construction on our house and we had our trailer out in the street while we were unloading things for more than 24 hours. So I just have a problem with putting 24 hours and if we're not gonna necessarily enforce it, I don't know that we're going to run out at 24 hours and say, here's your ticket. I think it seems a little unreasonable in my mind that we should have such a short timeframe on it. Forty-eight hours to me would seem a little bit more reasonable. And giving people even, you know, family and friends coming over with whatever it might be, their camper, and being there for the weekend, which is technically a 48-hour weekend, so.
I think when we were talking about that, we said that generally we didn't think that your neighbors will complain until it's been a couple of days. So then I think it makes enforcement easier to be like, oh, that's still out there, it's 24 hours later. Does that make sense?
Yep, I remember us talking about that. Definitely remember talking about that. But for me, then that's not, that's almost not in keeping with the intent of the ordinance because we're writing this ordinance as, you know, to be followed. And then to say, well, your neighbors aren't gonna complain for three days, hopefully, four days or a week. But, I mean, that's kind of little hopes and dreams for me, you know, you can't rely on that with your neighbors or without your neighbors, so.
So are you suggesting that we take anywhere where it says 24 consecutive hours and change it to 48 consecutive hours?
I would, I would, yes, ask for the 48 hours rather than 24.
One thing I recall, and I could be wrong, but I think one of the things we talked about is nothing in here prohibits campers or RVs from, you know, being parked in a driveway for that long. And maybe driveways aren't, some of them might not be long enough to accommodate that sort of thing. So maybe that's more common, you know, in communities where driveways are just designed to be shorter and campers might not fit on them. So of course, if somebody wants to park in your driveway for as long as they want, that might be a possibility.
But there are a lot of areas in town that don't have driveways that are gonna be conducive to having that parked out in the driveway without hanging out into the road, which then would violate another section of this. So I would be more comfortable with having 48 hours as just being kind of the common sense of life of a Saturday, Sunday stopover by some, a friend in your RV or camper.
I'm comfortable with 48 hours.
I'm okay with 48 hours. I'm just glad we're cleaning up this ordinance. Thank you for pulling everything from the front end because there's so much good stuff that we're fixing, so 48 hours, I'm good with.
We're fine with that.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for listening. Under that, let's see, we're in the same place. So under 20, number 20, which is gonna be on page three, the wording here just, it was a little bit confusing to me, so I wanna make sure that I have what we're saying right. Because this is about closing the street down for four hours or closing it down four hours before to do a curb-to-curb cleanup of snow. And then it says, so no person shall park any vehicle nor leave any vehicle, which was parked at the time of posting for a period of more than two hours thereafter in any block of any street. So posted during the time, the said signs are posted. That hurts my brain a lot, like. So are we saying that once the signs are posted, they have two hours to get out? Or saying they, what's happening here?
I'll have to read it.
Yeah.
And I'll take, I mean, this is existing language, so we're not, we're not creating anything new here. And I don't know if Chad wants to comment on that provision or if it's even been utilized by the city. But, I mean, if you want, I can certainly read through it again because it's been a while since I've looked at it and then give you an answer.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the intent of this, of getting it marked off and posted and cars getting out of the way. I just don't think that it's clear enough for anyone to read it to really say, you know, because most people don't sit and read ordinances all day long, right? So it might be a little bit confusing. Maybe we can just clean up that language a little bit to make it a little more clear. Sorry, give me one second.
While you're doing that, just to confirm, we are gonna communicate with the residents downtown specifically who are affected by the changes in this ordinance?
Yes, but if there's something specific you want communicated, let me know and we can make sure that we're hitting that.
Yeah, I just, you know, the Third Street folks where there's a substantial significant change. I think that it's really important that those folks are communicated to. I think everybody downtown, probably just a good reminder, although there aren't real super significant changes. And then I think it's a newsletter or a comment, I don't remember.
Here's how I read that.
Okay.
So it looks like Chad's team would have to post a sign at least four hours before they wanna go in and do their snow removal. And then that sentence about two hours says, if your car is there at the time they post the sign, which is supposed to be four hours ahead of time, they have two hours to remove it. So it sort of leaves a two-hour buffer on the back end in the event that somebody doesn't remove it, but requires them to get it out of there within two hours. So I think it, to me, it makes a little bit of sense and I assume there was some thought put into that when it was drafted years ago. And I don't know, maybe I'm not articulating that well, but I think that's the intent here is to say, you know, we're gonna put a sign up at noon saying that, you know, you can't park here because we're gonna do street removal or snow removal at four o'clock, four hours later. Technically then, you have two hours to remove your car if it's there at the time that sign gets put up. But they're not gonna go out and remove snow until four o'clock. So really, in theory, there's a two, like I said, a two-hour window where, you know, they could be ticketed or towed. And that would allow them to get towed or ticketed again before then they actually have to go and do the work. So I think the intent is to create not only that two-hour buffer, but also provide city staff and law enforcement the ability to go and remove cars in that second two-hour window.
So if I see a sign that says snow removal, 3:00 PM, cars must be removed, whatever it is, right? And I go out and my car is towed at 1:00 PM, I might be a little confused as to why that would happen.
They wouldn't have a time on them. It would say no parking.
Okay.
Say no parking because, you know, the city's gonna be, it's not gonna say anything other than no parking, seasonal no parking, I assume. If we do this, and again, I'm not sure if this has been utilized, but.
Just considering like, so we use like speed bumps, hour change, and then I think at best or at worst, we could clean up the language in that section 20 just to make sure the intent. We've spent so much time on this ordinance, I'd hate to think like some other group of folks in this room, 15 years from now are wondering what that section really means, because I don't think we know really. So let's take it back, let's make those changes, and let's give the council a clean copy at their next meeting, if that's okay with the council.
That would be great.
We can write that section 20 so that my seventh grade nephew can understand it.
My concern, my concern though, is that we don't get it adopted before it snows again. I mean, this is Minnesota.
July is the only month.
No, I think, I think that's a good plan.
Yeah.
We could certainly make the changes via motion, but there's no rush.
Yeah, I would rather go back.
So do we need to make a motion to table it?
We've got direction for now. I don't know if there's more direction coming, but I'm making notes.
I wasn't finished. That's okay. So we're looking down at section 10 on page eight. So we took out the accelerator in the fine because it used to be after 16 days or 30 days. So does it just stay $50? What happens? I'm fine with that, but what happens if they don't pay? So it's snowmobile vehicle parking violation, so we raised it to $50. And then we took the accelerators out for it, non-payment.
Yeah, this is usually what would happen if you don't pay petty misdemeanor, even traffic violations, is that the state can revoke your license, or it goes to collection. I mean, it gets pursued through the court system. These are all handled through the criminal justice system and district courts. I don't do prosecutions, so I don't know exactly the mechanics of all of that. But generally speaking, that's the way that, you know, payable citations work, especially in the traffic context, because otherwise nobody would pay their parking ticket if there was no ramification for it. So usually it's pretty significant, you know, consequences like potentially losing your license or that kind of a thing.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, nothing from Glenn?
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, so we will table that until an upcoming meeting.
Do you need a motion to table that then? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was still looking at it.
That's okay. It's when I was talking over you.
Alright, I got you, perfect.
Okay, then moving on to communications. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a pretty big list. This was from my update for the work session, so. I wanted to tee up a few items for you to consider, so. And I asked Erin Schmidt to help me out on this, but the condition, so the Sixth Street project we're still working on and we've been volleying some communication drafts back and forth to send out to residents on updated schedule. It looks like the retaining wall work is going to be done first, just based on pipe availability. And so one of the things I wanted to get some feedback from the council on or have a conversation about is related to the pavement condition, which is obviously very bad. And so understanding that the pavement might not be touched toward the end of July, wanting to kind of think about options related to keeping that pavement or milling it off. First, I was kind of sharing with Erin in anticipation of this. I, early in my time here in Carver, we were just getting ready to reconstruct Fourth Street and the Fourth Street Bridge. And Fourth Street was in pretty similar shape to Sixth Street at the time. And at the time, we threw down some blacktop to fill potholes and I got chewed out pretty good from a resident for spending the money to fill those potholes prior to the road being ripped up. And so that sticks with me and so I know there's been some communications via social media and conversations, et cetera, about how bad Sixth Street is. And so I just wanted to kind of get some feedback on, you know, and we have Erin and Chad here of what you'd like our strategy to be, if you want those potholes filled in the interim, if you wanna consider milling it off and just having it be gravel, which at this point might be frankly a smoother surface. There's pros and cons to that, which Erin and Chad can speak to better on that because you'd obviously have to maintain the gravel in a certain way as well. So with that, I'm gonna defer to Erin and Chad on their expertise and let the council have that discussion.
Yeah, just to add to that, as Brent mentioned, it's materials are driving schedule right now. So pipe and manhole structures is what's driving the recon schedule for the project. They have said it's very hard to predict, obviously. So he said the schedule could move up a couple of weeks potentially for the main reconstruction effort. So you're still looking at mid-July, give or take. If we were to direct BCM construction to reclaim the road right away, I'm sure they'd probably ask for some more money to maintain that for a few weeks. And I wouldn't recommend us maintaining it once, once they have the site and it's their site at that point. So that's a, that would be a potential liability issue. So I think there's, there's cost ramifications either way you go with it. Obviously, as Brent said, throwing some cold patch in those potholes costs money too, but it's a decision that the council has to make, so.
So, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just, if this surprises anyone in this room, let me know. But I don't wanna spend any more money on this than we have to. So I do not wanna put a cold patch down to tear it up in, like, we're talking the number of weeks that I can count on my left hand here. You know, Sixth Street is a name thoroughfare through our community, but it's not the only street to get downtown or to get out of downtown. It's not even, you know, it's the only street to get to Glenn's house, but beyond that, you can get to so many other fun, you can get to so many other fun places in our community without taking Sixth Street. So that's a choice. And I say that as somebody who got an email from somebody who claims that they had some significant repair work done to their car based off of driving on Sixth Street. So, you know, I think I would prefer to put rough road signs up or to just completely shut down the road before we put any more money into this, so.
I would prefer shutting down the road, but can we put a sign out about when the construction is expected to begin so that people? Because I've heard from people who are like, oh, the Sixth Street is terrible. I'm like, well, you know we're reconstructing it this year and they have no idea.
Right.
Which, I mean, I realize council meetings are thrilling and we have a huge tens-of-tens audience, but maybe just getting that out there so people are like, oh, it is coming. Okay, it's coming, it's coming. We know it's coming.
Right. You know, that's fair, but we've talked about it on social media. We've talked about it in the newsletter as recently as the newsletter that came out in the mailbox on Friday. You know, I don't think we haven't, you know, if you don't read, then you can't help it.
I support a signage, just any communication. There are very many people who don't engage social media.
Right, and that's what the newsletter is for.
And some that don't read the newsletter. And also, I think some that, some that can be very, but some that are in social media can be very vocal and are residents, so they're not getting the newsletter, they're not. But just then that way, it's for regardless of where you live, if you're traveling that road.
It's rough. Be done, yeah.
Yeah.
I support that. I also support not spending a cent, yeah.
Yes, agree.
Put a sign up, rough road.
Your direction?
Rough road or the date, like, construction coming?
Yeah, I think we'd probably put, like, we'd figure out a date, but road closed July 15th for construction.
I think if we put rough road, they're gonna say, duh. I think if we put rough road, they're gonna say, duh.
I'm for a sign, if that makes people feel better.
Yeah.
Don't put a penny into it. I mean, they're guaranteed speed bumps, it's great. It slows people down. My concern is that there's people that drive down the wrong side of the road. How can we stop that from happening? Don't put any more money into it. Just put a sign up, construction soon, and call it a day. I mean, there's, like Courtney said, there's so many different other routes in downtown. Use them.
We could have Dave with one of those spinny arrow signs that says, throw it ahead.
Yes.
Next.
But, but in seriousness on this one, I mean, I do want to make sure, I don't know the total condition out there, but, I mean, what we don't want to have happen is a motorcycle or something else to hit it and something awful to happen. So, I mean, I know that the construction project is imminent. It's gonna happen really, really, really soon. And who knows how fast you can even get someone out there to do any of these makeshift improvements in the meantime. So I think, I think the discussion tonight is fine and the council's directing staff to put signage out there and other things that draw attention to it. But obviously, what I wouldn't want to have happen is for something awful to, you know, happen when we know that the street's in terrible shape, so.
I mean, considering Dave's point, I mean, what you, we could ramp up to this closed Sixth Street from Wywood Parkway.
That's gonna be closed long enough. I'd say we leave it open for now. It's a few more weeks. Oh, Glenn.
Have a lower speed limit?
I think we're making this, we're making a sign up and just, it's a few weeks.
And, you know, generally cities have what's called discretionary immunity when you're talking about these sorts of things. You're, you're talking about policy decisions and spending money and whether you want to do it or not. Usually cities have, you know, road repair policies in place which provide support for that kind of discretion. This sort of discussion also provides support for it. So I mean, I'm glad the city is talking about it, thinking about it. And, you know, I think we'd have a pretty strong argument that that sort of immunity would apply. I just would hate to have to even make that argument because, you know, then somebody would have gotten hurt or something terrible could happen. So that's the only reason I raise it. But I, I don't think the discussion tonight is leading us on any path that isn't, you know, legally a good idea.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm fine with closing it sooner rather than later, but I think, you know, we'll have barricades up. And just like on Jonathan River Parkway last summer, you'll still see folks that have been down there. So I don't think that that's a stopgap, but I do think that it's just a handful of weeks.
All right. Moving on, there was, and I think the council's aware of this, there was a, we had a water pressure surge in our system, I think it was last week, that bolted and Mink is kind of working on. And so I've just asked Aaron to, to share an update with the council on how we're processing that information, gathering it, collecting it, communicating, et cetera.
Yeah, so Chad and the public services staff, Brenda Aft has been doing a really good job. They've been fielding all the calls, recording what the issue has been. Our team is reviewing where, where this, where these things have occurred in the system. We have a multi-zone system in the city, so it makes a big difference where you're at, you know, elevationally and all that stuff. But we're just kind of gathering information at this point and trying to determine what exactly would have caused that to happen, so. There's really nothing to report at this point.
Is the issue in the past and we just want to prevent it, or is it still ongoing?
So there's, the sys, the system is, there's some sensitivities to it in the existing system. And then obviously with some of the work that's been going on with the plant too, we just want to, we need to figure out exactly what, what is happening and making sure that it, it won't happen again, so.
Okay.
Has it happened more than once in the last like two months?
No, no.
And we're making it right for whoever experiences this?
Yep, for sure. So we still need a little more time to look through things and gather all the facts. So we'll report back when we know more.
And then we don't often bring code enforcement issues to the council, but we have a, a unique one that I've asked Dave Anderson to kind of update the council. That's regarding two sixteen Carver Creek Place. It's some unique circumstances that, and I know there's been some community interest in the property in the past and currently, and so just wanted to have Dave run through what's a maybe unique set of and complex set of circumstances with the property.
Yes, so I learned about this property a month or so ago and looked through the file. It's my understanding, I don't know how familiar the council is with the, the property, but it's my understanding, the current owners bought the property in the early two thousands when that development was being built. And the owner wanted to be the general contractor and build his, his home by himself. Didn't get very far, but there were some rules in place at the time. I think there's still an existence that required the structure to be up and fully weatherproofed and, you know, roof siding, windows, all that stuff to be in within a year of beginning construction. So that's all been done. Construction stopped two thousand and five or six-ish. I don't have the exact dates in front of me, but it's my understanding that nothing has happened since then. So it's been over fifteen years really of ongoing issues with, you know, the grass gets long or windows break and it's, it's a vacant structure. We have concerns about its safety, whether it meets the definition of hazardous building under, under state statute. And just given the fact that so much time has passed and, you know, naturally things deteriorate, especially when nobody's there maintaining it. We want to get our building official in there to take a look at it and see if it's something that the city could potentially remedy and take action on. So there was a request made to the property owner for an inspection that went unanswered and ignored. So the next step is I'm gonna work with Nick Jorgensen, the building official, on what's called an administrative search warrant. It would allow him to go into the property and take a look. He's got some serious concerns because I don't think the basement was even, you know, finished with anything. So it's just dirt down there. I mean, he's worried about potential, you know, vermin, rodents, snakes, anything that could have come up through the ground and who knows what's in there. I'm not saying that's in there, but he's got significant concerns and we don't want, you know, structures deteriorating like that in the city. And so hopefully, if things go smoothly, we get permission to inspect and that would be issued by a district court judge. And then, you know, he would bring back any findings to the council depending on what, what we see and what he sees if, if we go out there. So that's kind of the, the update at this point. It's still gonna require an application for that warrant and we'll see if we can get permission for it, but that's the goal and that's as much as really the city can do at this point in time with that property. Because I know it's been an ongoing concern of neighbors and really not only a property maintenance issue, but now it's kind of becoming a, you know, a structural integrity issue and whether that building is safe and should be in the community is a question that I have, so.
Do you have any estimate on the timeline to get that warrant and get the inspection completed?
It varies. Nick and I are planning to put that warrant together as soon as he's back from his vacation. He's back later this week. And then before COVID, it was pretty streamlined. I, I would walk into district court buildings and a signing judge would look at a warrant application, review it and sign it, and you'd walk out the door with your warrant. Most district courts now have gone to an e-filing requirement because they just didn't want people coming in and going during that time. So I think that's still what's happening. And then unfortunately, it depends on when the judge looks at it. We can't force them to look at it right away. But hopefully not more than a few weeks to, to see what the decision will be. And there's case law that supports the cities and statutes that support our ability to get that permission. It's just a matter of going through those steps because, you know, Nick, you know, may need to go out there with law enforcement and gain entry however he can. And I, I wouldn't want to do that or put him in, you know, harm's way without a judge blessing it. So I think we're moving that process along.
I think if Nick is going out there, you said may have law enforcement with him. I think I would feel more comfortable if he did have law enforcement with him, even if he had a warrant to go in.
Yeah, we, I mean, we, we would recommend that and we'd talk to a deputy to go out there because, you know, a deputy may have tools as well to get him into a locked door that, you know, Nick probably doesn't have laying around city hall. You know, what we don't want to do is him to go bust a door down. It would be, you do it in the least intrusive and, you know, causes the least amount of, you know, damage, that kind of a thing. So that's, that's the intent. I mean, we would have him. I don't, I, I don't get the sense that I'm concerned about Nick's safety because I don't think anybody lives in that home, you know, in terms of what law enforcement may be able to help with. But, but that said, yes, in all my warrants that I submit, I always say, you know, building official and one, you know, peace officer can go out and do it, so.
Yeah, I, I just think that makes me feel a little bit safer, especially if you enter your home on a warrant like that, that there's at least an officer with, so something to think for in the future when this happens. So I'm glad to see something is finally moving forward with that building.
Agreed. Thank you.
Another project that we just recently started working on, we've kind of a telltale sign of kind of a policy that might need an overhaul, even though it's pretty recent, is the number of questions and kind of unique scenarios that you can't find within a policy. We're kind of, based on some feedback from Brenda and Vicky, we're kind of finding that in our facilities rental policy. And so we, no offense, Aaron, but I think the policy and the fee structure is a little over-engineered. You know, we got this. But I, you know, and kind of, we, Dave and Vicky and Brenda and I met today and I think there is a little bit of, you know, when you build a new facility, you know, there's a certain sense of protection and you don't really know what you know.
Right.
And so I think we have a better idea and some feedback from the council. I, I think there are some ways we can streamline it, hopefully maybe increase rentals. And so we're gonna be working on that over the next several weeks and months and bring something back to you. You're right.
I was giving him what I told you so, look.
A couple of other things, uh, kind of by happenstance, I noticed that on MetroNet's billing, there's a line on their billing that says Carver, I think it's transportation tax and, or Carver Transit Tax. And so I'm following, I'm in the process of following up with MetroNet and probably eventually Carver County. I'm assuming that's related to Carver County, but it's listed as Carver. And so as you know, MetroNet's presence is ramping up in the city and we want to get ahead of folks saying, I thought you said no franchise fees. What's this Carver tax? So I think the solution is just having them at Carver County Transit or whatever the language is, but we just want to make sure that's clarified. I asked Chad to be ready, as you know, we were working on a plan to make some improvements to Olson Park or repairs. I, that's probably the, the better piece. Chad, would you just mind sharing with the council where we're at and what you have planned in the short term to restore that park?
Sure. With the, with the heat of last summer and lack of precipitation, Olson Park, basically a lot of the, the grass died. Only the long-riddled weeds survived. So it basically became a huge dandelion patch. The biggest issue we found was that the lack of irrigation. We had some turf experts out and realized that that park is pretty much all clay soil. So in the heat of the sun, it bakes up, it's very hard, doesn't support grass. So we've worked with Brent on the irrigation agreement. And over the course of the next probably three weeks, we're gonna do some tree replacement, turf restoration, and we'll have irrigation to the park. So it'll be an ongoing, probably a year or two event. It'll be much, much greener with grass over the next three weeks.
Is that gonna, are we gonna have to continue to irrigate that park in perpetuity because of the soil?
Yes. We can, we can do some, like, annual maintenance on it, overdressing. So we can add some, you know, whatever we need, I think it was peat moss and some sand to the soils to kind of enrich it and keep it fluffed up and not baked solid like a, like a rock in the, in the sun.
And we're not gonna be growing a straight Kentucky bluegrass mix up there?
No, it'll be mixed. I'm not sure what the.
Tall, tall huskies?
Uh, then the last thing, in preparing for the trail maintenance agreement with the county and kind of looking at the materials for the Minnesota River Bluffs Trail, I noticed that kind of a lot of the materials out there really don't highlight that Carver is on that trail and our trailhead. And so I connected with Marty Walsh and he agreed and was really great in saying that they were gonna work on updating their materials. And so we're gonna try to highlight Depot Park and that the whole trailhead is a part of the River Bluffs Trail and that it runs through the downtown. So be on the lookout for some updated materials probably toward the end of summer. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, yes, as I reported previously at our last Southwest Transit Commission meeting, the commission recommended that staff start contract negotiation for the CEO position to replace Glenn Simich. And then the candidate that we chose is Maria Mencia Diaz, who's currently in Southwest Transit staff. She is the chief administration officer. So they'll be moving forward to negotiate contract and then we'll, then she'll be official. Next, they're starting their twin service this week. Southwest Transit also received their first new electric vehicles for prime service. This is to help them expand their prime service. I want to say they're Volvos. They were initially gonna get Teslas, but they couldn't from a supply chain perspective. Anywho, and so from an expansion perspective, the next place Prime is expanding is into the Adina territory. So I think they've started advertising that already. That's all I have. Lauren?
I just have one, like, a thank you to Brendan's team or just kind of a good credit too. It was on our consent agenda about the trail maintenance agreement that we entered into with the council to during the winter, keep our portion of the trail cleared. So I know that's been asked for and it took, and I think that should be good to communicate presence that we know who's gonna do it, it's us. But it was amazing too to see in the packet that was not just an easy exchange of emails. It was a seven-page contract. But, um, yeah, and I, I just think to that partnering and then aligning with our trail connectivity. So thank you for the efforts there.
Kristi?
We have an HPC meeting next week. And other than that, I only have one other thing, and that is the employee survey that I see that we've gotten the results from that. So I'm very happy that that was finally done. So I appreciate that. I was looking in the email that you had sent to staff about going back with their teams and discussing the outcomes. Was there anything given to them as how to facilitate that? Because we went from having an anonymous survey to then asking them to go over the responses, which may or may not work, especially if they wanted to remain anonymous about something they, they thought of, so.
Yeah, the, the direction that I gave the team, our leadership team or department heads was to act in terms of a facilitator, so not to kind of drill down into like debate or like, why do you think this way? But ask more in terms of what surprised you, you know, what are things that you think we could do that would make this, you know, number go up? So if, you know, one of the areas, and we'll be bringing this to the council in a work session format, but one of the things, I think, at least in the full-time study, full-time survey was related to, you know, not feeling like they're in the, in the loop. And so rather than saying, well, this is what we've prepared for you to resolve that, we want to get ideas from them on like, you know, what types of information, you know, would be helpful? What would be the best way to get it? So it's, it's an exercise in facilitating that conversation and not trying to find out who said what or how they feel, but more proactive. These are the results. How do you feel about them? What can we do to make this better? Recognizing that, you know, some are very easy as far as like facilitation and communication. You know, the ones that have, you know, budget numbers tied to them related to benefits or compensation, they get a little bit harder.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there was coaching there so that the people who took it as an anonymous survey didn't feel now uncomfortable in, in way it was being approached with their.
Yeah, a hundred percent. That was, I just talked to Chief Trimble about that this morning and that, you know, he's gonna meet with his officer group prior to, and to coach them on, you know, we're not looking to like, who's the one person that marked this? It's, this is more of a, we don't want to, you know, pick out what the solutions are for you and say like, this is what we've prepared. It's, what should we glean from this information? What should we take away? What should we take away? And what would be the best way to address it? So, I, I hope it's more of a, I'm expecting it, and I have no doubt our team will be able to do it, but a facilitative role, a, a value added. Because there's, I mean, the feedback is what we wanted. The hard part, and I spoke to council member Henry about this, about, you know, there's pros and cons to the anonymity. And so, there's not a productive way, at least in my opinion, to try to like get at who said what. And so, it's a kind of a fool's errand just to go down that road of like, where are, where are we at here? Who said this? But I'd rather just take it in and then recognizing that there, you know, we have a smaller group. So, there's gonna be swings. I don't think we should be overconfident in any area that we maybe ranked or scored really high in or get real low if we had an area where we're like, well, I wonder why that is. But to kind of take it as a whole and then say, okay, how can we make some improvements in these areas?
Okay. Yeah, I think that team approach where they're just saying, okay, so we, we see this as the whole that it is. And so, let's figure out what, what we can throw out there as like a solution. So, thanks. I'm glad that that's been addressed because that was my one concern about the results and how they were gonna deal with them as staff. So, thank you. Glenn?
Uh, I had a planning commission meeting and we went over the, uh, the development that we voted for tonight. And that was about the extent of the planning commission. It was a four, four, oh, vote. Not too much else.
All right. The only update that I have is I'm sure many of you know, legislative session ended without a bonding bill, which is a bummer because we were in the bonding bill or a draft of it for $3.5 million for a grant from the DNR. And the weekend before the session ended, Representative Nash was really good about, you know, connecting me with the right folks and making sure we had the right language in there. And then, we didn't have the, we didn't get the budget money. Additionally, what I have concerns about, and I'm trying to get to the bottom of the stories. There was an article in the Star Tribune that was published last week on May 30th. And it talked about how because the state of Minnesota didn't come up with a bonding bill and didn't finish their work, that the federal money is now in jeopardy. So, the $2.5 million that Representative or Congressman Emmer was such a good advocate for the city of Carver that got us, we might not see that money now either. So, I have emails into Representative Nash, Senator Coleman and Congressman Emmer. The only one of those three who has had somebody from their team respond to my email is Congressman Emmer. And they're trying to get to the bottom of it. I'll have Brent forward you the email, if that's okay, that I sent as an example to those three. That includes a link to the article if you guys are interested in reading it. Star Tribune has a paywall. So, maybe since I got through it, I'll just copy and paste it and send it to you guys if that's a concern. Or send it to Brent, who can send it to everybody. So, um, that would be beyond disappointing if we didn't see any of this money. There is hope that we could have a special session. I'm not hearing odds of it being much more than 60/40. And maybe I've got that reversed. So, anyways, if you run into anybody who works in St. Paul, the capital, let them know how much we'd like to see them come up with a, a deal.
Southwest Transit expressed the same thing because it's also transit funding. It's, it's in general, infrastructure funding from the government, which includes transit as well as roads, bridges, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Clean water.
A lot of things.
All kinds of necessary.
All kinds of good things that we'd like to get.
But thank you, Courtney, for pushing so hard on this and working on this. Thank you, thank you.
That's it for me. With that, I would, I think we're done. I had to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member Henry. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those same side. Motion passes. Good evening.